We agree that we are coming to the Citrus Planning Board Thursday, September 27, 2022, held here on the Spike Board at Town Hall. We are listening to members tonight, Mr. McCleary, Mr. Pritchett, our attorneys on business. I need to read this statement first. The Citrus Planning Board is prepared to provide an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our community members to all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Next on our agenda is all about how to get any advice on the after-trip news, we should know. One other piece of information is we do have a model for the recent release of the 20th row. With that being said, we have a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have started meeting with a public hearing. A site plan review and review is special permit for a mixed-use building at Stone Water Permit in Village Center and neighborhood district, Wiggish Gateway, New Driftway Transit Village Sub-District. Yes, you will have a public announcement.
Yes, in accordance with Master and Foes, Chapter 48, Section 9 and 11, this would zone by law, Section 580 Village Center and neighborhood district, Section 750 Design Review, Section 770 Site Plan Review, and 940 Returns. The Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, September 22, 2022, at 6:30 PM in the Select Lords Hearing Room, Citrus Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Citrus. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by the applicant, John Tedeschi, for a site plan review and special permit for a mixed-use building and a stormwater permit in Village Center and neighborhood district, Wiggish Driftway Gateway District, New Driftway Transit Village Sub-District, VCN GGNDTV, regarding the construction of a mixed-use building with 25 residential units, 35 bedrooms, and 4,200 square feet of general office/retail space on the first floor, associated parking, site utilities, and site amenities at the project location of 61 New Driftway. The property is owned by John Tedeschi and Jamie James Guinness. The property is shown on the Cessers map as parcel 53-03-2A. Plans are available for review in the Planning Board Office, Town Hall, Citrus, by appointment only. Please call 71-545-8730. But others and other interested parties are invited to attend the public hearing.
She reads that screen, okay, it has a thing on it.
I picked up.
I have no idea if that does anything. Okay, there you go. Okay. Scott, Karen, would you like to, uh, gentlemen, would you like to introduce yourself?
I just want to say that we've asked the applicant to do an abbreviated presentation tonight to have a brief, quick comments from the board, quick comments from the public, because we do not have the peer review in. The peer review is still out, but we had to open within 65 days because it's a special permit. So that's where we are tonight.
Yes. Karen.
Good evening, and we are prepared to give you a brief presentation and welcome the opportunity to do so despite the fact that the peer review and engineer report hasn't been met. And I am Attorney Steve Gard. The applicant with you this evening is John Tedeschi, Jamie Guinness, the owners of the property, Jamie Kellerer from Haxium Architects, and of course, you all know Greg Morse. As read in the public meeting, the public notice of this, it's a project at 61 New Driftway for a mixed-use building containing 25 units, two three bedrooms, six two-bedroom and 71 bedrooms, and 4,200 square feet of office/retail space. The lot itself consists of 37, 34,727 square feet with entrances on both New Driftway and Old Driftway. The project we for you this evening and the application that was filed was designed under the previous version of the bylaw, so we have a little bit of a massage to do on penthouse situations. But we thought it was best to get at least the public hearing open with the application that was filed. And we will continue to revise the plans and make some changes to that so we file. That having been said, I return the short public hearing or presentation over to Greg so we can run it through the site, and then we would have Mr. Kellerer walk you through the architecturals.
Thank you. Looking at the site from basically the 30,000-foot view, Greg Morse, Morse engineer, Bruce's engineer. Looking at the site on the planet here, that's the existing conditions. We know it at the corner of Old Driftway, New Driftway, existing building there, the Southern Plaza, St. Day Care. It also has, as I showed you in gray, a significant portion of the former MBTA parking lot. It is abutted by the Drew Company Project, the residences at Driftway Plaza. At the top of the page, it's right at the page. Property has access to public water, sewer, gas, and electric, which are listed on the site. It's in the GGNDTV zoning district. Both streets here are also referred to as pedestrian frontage overlay zones. There is no FEMA floodplain on the site, there are no wetlands, there are no Zone As or Zone Twos. It is not in the Water Resource District or the Floodplains Watership Protection District. Looking to the proposed site layout, up page here, just look at the first one. The building I've shaded in brown here, Jamie will go over the architecture for us in just a moment. But it's a mixed-use building, the first floor level would be office/retail, approximately 4,200 square feet. The floors above that contain 17 one-bedrooms, six two-bedrooms, and two three-bedroom units, five which would be designated as affordable.
Wait, just a second, Greg. Tell me about the first floor again, please.
First floor is 4,200 square feet of office/retail.
Again, did you say 17 one? Seventeen?
11 bedroom apartments.
Okay, I wasn't, yeah.
Units, six two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. Five of them would be affordable. At this point in time, we have not designated whether they would be apartments or condos or furniture, most of all in units as we progress. There is shaded in gray, the parking areas we provided, a total of 40 parking spaces, 38 are required under the bylaw. Two of them are ADA accessible, and four of them have been designated for electric field charging with two stations provided to service those two spots. Pedestrian access, we have a sidewalk around the frontage of both fronts on Old Driftway and New Driftway extending to the lot lines on either side. Amenity space is made up of space on the site itself, on the north side of the site abutting the Drew Company Project, we have an outdoor picnic area. At the corner of the property, we have outdoor patio space, which would be located on the corner. And then interior or above the building essentially is rooftop deck space, which Jamie will go over a little further in the architecturals. Provides a total of 7,280 square feet, which exceeds the 6,900 square foot requirement by law. All of the drainage on site is directed to subsurface recharge systems under the parking lot. We did soil testing out at the site, found very gravelly soil, relatively deep groundwater. It would be similar to the systems that we had designed at either 50 Countryway or the Medical Brewery with respect to drainage. And John Chessy doing the peer review of that aspect and the utility connections. We do anticipate reconnecting to public water, it would be a fully sprinkled building and sewer utility services. I'll turn it over to Jamie for architecture.
So here's sort of the main render image that we've had for the building, which is showing the general appearance from the corner side and, you know, sort of highlighting that patio space, which probably have plantings and benches and tanks. Valleys along this front side, a little bit setback from the road. Sidewalk with some areas for plantings there. The way that we designed this was sort of, you know, meant to highlight some retail spaces along this corner with some, you know, nice entrances in this sort of front porch area just to get a nice feel at the corner. This image here was sort of a shifted view that was requested by one of the planning board members at the informal to just get a sense of how this building would look from across the street and seeing the scale of the project that's recently built on the adjacent property. So we made an effort to do that, kind of, I think, shows how we've, I mean, even I believe since the last meeting, we may have reduced the height of the building as well just a little bit to make sure we met the requirement of the fourth floor. So I think we've got the building, you know, height-wise, you know, very appropriate for that, you know, that requirement. And I think it will appear to be, you know, a fairly low building for a four-story building. And following the requirements for the step back, which we see in the zoning, does pretty effectively hide, you know, the fourth story from a lot of the views that you get of the building. Just going quickly through the plans that probably all seen. As Greg mentioned, 4,200 square feet divided up, you know, in an appropriate way for the retail and commercial or office space all along the street side. Then we have four single-bedroom units on the rear, the first floor, and the access to, you know, the up the elevator and the residential units would be a private entrance at the back corner. We are proposing one live-work unit just as a, just to kind of mix the use a little bit further. And then as we go up, we get a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms as we get to the second floor. And two, one and two bedrooms on the third floor. And the fourth floor is we introduce the public amenity space for this rooftop deck. And we get one, two, three, 40 units on that level. We mentioned proposing penthouse space based on the original zoning allowance. And we're, I guess, looking to get some feedback on possible alternative uses for that roof space just based on the location, the nice views we have from the building. We're thinking that this isn't able to be used as a residential unit. Perhaps it could be modified in a way to provide a community space, whether it be an interior space or an exterior space with, you know, maintaining the elevator access for all the residents to use the space. Elevations have been updated since the last meeting just to reflect the building height, which would officially be measured to, and this is not updated, I apologize. The packets that we submitted to you guys have the updated height. I believe it's 38 to 39 feet to the midpoint on the fourth floor. And so it should be actually well below the requirement for the fourth floor building height. And the final image that we have that not been seen before were just some views that we, the way the original zoning read for penthouse required that a penthouse be set back by 10 feet from all sides of the building. And also that the view of that structure, the penthouse, was not to be able to, you know, visible from any point around the perimeter of the property. So we took a couple of views from the sidewalk to basically show that that basically was, you know, that requirement was being met by the design that wouldn't have any real visibility of that structure from those points. So if that, you know, if there are any, you know, possible, you know, alternative options for our using of that, you know, rooftop space, certainly, you know, be happy to talk about that further, so.
I'm sort of concerned because you're putting four units on the first floor that are bedrooms, living units. And I think the premise with all of this zoning in the village district is that the first floor was really supposed to be office/retail as opposed to bedrooms.
My understanding of what the zoning reads is that you can have residential units at the first level provided that they're 60 feet back from the property line or the sidewalk, so.
I understand that, but it's just sort of, um, interchanging in this town, looked at and differently changing. And I can see a number of people, offices, whatever, moving into Wiggish for a number of different reasons. And I think the spirit of this bylaw, 60 feet notwithstanding, was for office/retail on the first floor. That's my opinion.
Can I follow up with the 60 feet? We're gonna want to see the 60 feet delineated on the plans because it applies from Old Driftway and New Driftway. So we actually want to see where it's seen delineated on the plans.
Thank you. That's, I feel very strongly about that. And it's also my understanding that your public amenity is the sidewalk?
No, that's density bonus.
Density bonus. And we haven't gone that road yet?
No.
Okay, so I'm also, thank you.
Ben?
At our first informal discussion, or a couple months ago, one of my concerns, and it's not like others as well, was kind of the overall mass of the building. I mean, I understand this is not something that's going to be permitted tonight, you know, and you're probably gonna have to go to the Design Review Committee. And so though, I know you don't want to put the cart before the horse from the design perspective, but I'm just curious, since that feedback, have substantive changes been made to kind of tone down that potential issue, right, I guess, the mass, particularly from, you know, from the front elevation, like that, that's kind of, in my opinion, the best looking.
This is actually, I mean, really reflects the change in height that we made to each level. So we reduced each floor to floor by six inches right off the bat. And then aside from that, you know, the fourth floor allowance is kind of dictated by the, you know, step back requirement that's shown. So I think we've kind of gone to great pains to make sure that this building fits into that step back to kind of allow that fourth story to disappear from view for the most part. And I think that it's kind of a struggle to follow, you know, that diagram and the height requirements and to kind of craft a New England-style building that looks appealing. So I think that's really what we've tried to do, and I feel that we're, you know, really meeting all those, you know, massing requirements that are shown. So, yeah, other than to, you know, lower each level a bit, to kind of bring down the top and everything, I think that's, that's kind of all that we've done to, you know, address that particular idea.
All right.
So you brought the top down, how far?
Well, the last time since I collected to update this sheet, our midpoint on the fourth floor roof, I believe, was at 40, we're at 43, we're at 43.7, and now I think we're at 38 and a half or 39 feet to the midpoint. So come down by 18, 20 inches.
And then everything else has stayed the same, pretty much?
Yeah, for the most part, everything else has, you know, stayed the same in terms of the massing and the, you know, aesthetic of the building.
So many one-bedrooms.
We've made an effort to, to put, you know, as many multiple bedroom units as we can. The, you know, the typical struggle is the parking requirement, so fitting the, you know, getting as many as we can. Given that we're looking at altering the penthouse, it's opening up another three bedrooms possibly distributed throughout the rest of the building. So hopefully that can change those numbers around a bit for us.
Have you had any conversation with neighbors about street circulation and traffic studies, standpoint damage, or?
We have submitted a traffic study. But we do, we haven't had any public outreach, community meetings, but we do have the neighbor across the street who was here to speak on their behalf.
So we do know that the elimination of penthouses was passed at the town meeting. So while I'd like to penthouse, man, I expect something really awesome on my move. I don't know what it's gonna be, but I would like to see something really creative outside of blocks there. I've been looking for a live move for four years, so let's see what we can do, may know, may know.
But that'll do for the president's, right?
Yeah, but even still, our setting medium. It's kind of a, it's not a lot of ring ring down there, so, you know, it's kind of, kind of be a space to get back. I don't have any questions, I've told you before, I like this building. It's not as tall as I thought it was going to be, so that, and we'll wait for the discussions. Since this is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, if you could have your name and your address, please. Invite us to come forward with that here, I can do one of those.
There you go.
My name is Rick Putcrush, I'm with Fulcrum Real Estate Partners. And we are, we represent Fulcrum Harbor LLC, the owner of 56 New Driftway, the medical building directly across the street. In fact, that is exactly what we would be looking at in our building. And assuming that some of the changes that you are talking about here are made to make this as nice a project as we think it's going to be, we're in full support of this project.
Is there anybody in TV land?
So if you're online and you'd like to make a comment, you can raise your hand at the bottom of your screen. If you're by phone, you can hit star nine. If you can't find the way to raise your hand on the bottom of your screen, please wave at us through your camera.
Ms. Lambert, you have no hands raised.
Oh, okay. So Karen, yes. There's a number of issues that you need to be aware of, and they need to be addressed sooner in the project rather than later in the project. Circulation, as we just discussed, water and sewer studies will be required. I know you're attempting to work on that. We're concerned about traffic. It's still saying it's going to be low surface B at the entrance out on Old Driftway, and Old Driftway has to be evaluated. You need a special permit for building width over 100 feet. In addition to penthouses, setback, step back was changed the other night as well at town meeting. The board would like a landscape plan by a registered landscape architect with types, sizes, et cetera. Density bonus, you're saying at the moment that you're offering an easement for the sidewalk that's on your property and putting in the sidewalks along the front of the property. Well, that's required as part of the pedestrian frontage. So I think the board will have some significant stuff to say. I don't really think that that's going to be considered sufficient for a density bonus. Affordable units, no information was provided at this time. I just ask that you keep this front and center in your mind and not wait until the last minute on what you're thinking about for affordable units. We need a list of all the waivers requested. I would think that the board would want, we need more, we need more information on the wall details. Let's see. I just want to make sure that the drawings are clear on what constitutes the public amenity space. And I would think the board would want to refer this project to the Design Review Committee after they've had a chance to go back and tweak their building for the design that they actually intend to propose.
We go down, we go back and show us before we go back and put that right.
So we will not be scheduled in the Design Review Committee till after the next hearing.
All right, are you ready?
I don't know if Karen's done yet.
So based on, based on not having the peer review, you're gonna have to tweak the building. We thought that an appropriate time to continue the next public hearing would be November 17. Is that correct for timelines for architecture? Submitting four weeks before, before the hearing. This has to be submitted four weeks prior to account for peer review, peer review, so the board can get the peer review back one week prior to it. That includes site and architecture.
Any idea when the peer review will be to us for the, from John? That's kind of determining our four-week window, obviously.
Well, I mean, he's entitled to a full three weeks. He didn't get authorized through the contract to begin until plus or minus September 13. So I know he, I know he is working on review.
Maybe end of next week early, the week after, something like that. Yeah, so we could, we could, I think we could hit those deadlines.
Okay, and if you're caught and needs to give Karen sufficient time so that, you know, we, we don't want to waste time coming in to get for a continued, you know, that goes. Better out here walking up with doctors, right, so we know. All right, yeah.
If I could just, Karen, if I could indulge you, we have a couple of minutes on the roof. I was hoping to get some feedback to help the architect in the design so that we won't waste another meeting getting that. If that's okay, if we don't have enough time, then we can move on.
Doctor Moore?
I was hoping, Ms. Lambert, that we could get some feedback on the roof now that we have to make that sort of dramatic change between the, we were thinking, we spitballed this this afternoon, we were thinking that obviously it's open space with an open deck area for the residents, maybe an outdoor kitchen so they can go up there, you know, and feel like it's home, you know, having a backyard. Ideally, I think we would like to see the indoor space up there with a rec room or something where the residents could enjoy a ping pong table or something like that. Or along those lines, not a residence, not a dwelling, but something along those lines that would fit in with the headhouse for the elevator and in with the headhouse for the staircase, the internal staircase that we're gonna need to put up anyway. Something that looks tasteful, that would be likely not very visible from the street as the penthouse would have been, but certainly not amassing. Possibly a covered area, almost like a deck cover, so that in inclement weather, people could still sit outside. And obviously, we would have proposed vegetation and plant, bower plants and whatnot up there as well. Maybe, maybe even a little garden like you had suggested.
I think that's, that's really an interesting musical space. There's not a lot of open space, although you have true amenity areas, they're really quite small. And what can we do during COVID is people want to be outside. Everybody was American, Karen, it was amazing for the first couple of months.
But am I headed in the right direction in that concept?
I'm just curious, are we talking about a deck on the fourth floor? Are you talking about retaining a penthouse?
No, the penthouse on the floor where the penthouse would have been, which is the,
So a deck on the fourth floor?
Correct.
So you're on the roof of the fourth floor?
Yes.
There's no structure up there aside from potentially something that's a sun covering or a headhouse for an elevator?
Well, no, I'm suggesting that there would be a small room attached where you would exit the elevator, and that would be a small rec room on that side, you know, like for the headhouse, just making a bigger headhouse to allow people to enjoy that common area and then be able to exit, say, through sliders or French doors onto a patio type.
You have to meet the definition of building height exceptions.
I got it.
So, I mean, so that's what, that's what you have to meet, whatever in this building had exception definition. If that can be met, then I think the board is willing to consider this. But you have to meet that definition.
Yeah, well, and houses for elevators are exempt, so we can, we could start with that.
We could entertain lots of ideas, like I said, this is really the first opportunity that I've had on this board in. We could entertain lots of ideas, like I said, this is really the first opportunity that I've had on this board in, however, and then I've been looking for a, a live roof, I, I really would love to see something like that.
Okay.
Up there, so if you wanna go in that direction, you know, bring it, throw it against the wall and see what sticks in this place, that's how.
That's all I was asking, I just wanted to not go down a rabbit hole that was,
I just say to be clear, a, a library for,
Pickleball court. I have one in my driveway, I have one in my driveway.
Up and coming thing.
I would love that, I would move in to that place. Yeah, that's right.
So you want pickleball?
Pickleball court, yeah, and thought that would be,
I, I know, that keeps telling that confusing, I, I, I have to really,
Well, thank you for the intelligence, I appreciate the feedback and that would be very helpful to us and the design team.
Okay, so just be conscious of the height. I, I just, I don't want anybody to go down a rabbit hole and not meet the height.
We'll look at it, yep.
I'm hope to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing, recycling, administrative review and special permit for mixed use building and stormwater permit in the village center and neighborhood district, Green Bush Gateway District, Green Bush Riverway Transit Village Sub-District, VCN, GGG, NDTV, until November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, at six thirty P M. And to continue the time of action for filing with the town court until April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
On paper?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen, you can give me the sign?
Yes.
Thank you.
Twenty-five, nine.
Sorry, it's all,
Time for you to take it.
All right, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, uh, continuing. That was me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last second, Mr. Schumacher.
Thanks. Thank you very much for, have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we continue with the public hearing of a site site administrator review with special permit for mixed use building. And you can read the rest. Any points on past general laws, chapter forty-eight, section nine and eleven, and with situates only five laws, section five eighty, village center and neighborhood district, section seven fifty, design review, section seven seventy, cycling review, and nine forty, refer. Planning board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, September twenty-two at, twenty twenty-two, at six forty-five P M. in the slipboards, hearing room, Sitchman Town Hall, Chief Justice Sitchman, Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Sitchman. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by Saro City LLC for cycling review and special permit from mixed use building and multi-family building in a village center and neighborhood district, Green Bush, Driftway, Gateway District, Green Bush Village Center Sub-District and Gateway Business Sub-District, VCN, GGG, GVC and GWB, and stormwater permit regarding construction of a multi-use building with fourteen residential units and three thousand four hundred eighty-five square feet of general offices slash retail space on the first floor and a multi-family building with six residential units, a total of thirty-five bedrooms that propose, associated parking and site utilities and site amenities at the projected location of thirty-three New Driftway slash seven McDonald Terrace. The property is owned by Saro City LLC. The property is shown on assessment maps, parcel fifty-three dash oh five dash nineteen and fifty-three dash five dash twenty-eight. Plans are available for review in the planning board office, town hall situated by appointment only. Please call seven eight one five four five eight seven three oh. Butters and other interested parties are invited to attend this public hearing.
All right, so Cersei LLC has asked for an immediate continuance tonight. They, we don't have funds yet for peer reviews, so the peer review has been commenced. So we have a motion for, um, immediate continuance, no testimony.
I'm hope to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing, recycling administrator review and special permit for mixed use building and multi-family building and stormwater permit in the village center and neighborhood district, Green Bush Gateway District, Green Bush Center Sub-District and Gateway Business District, VCN, GGG, GVC and GWB, until December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, at six thirty P M. And to continue the time from action for filing with the town court until April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Please stand a second.
Second.
On paper.
Aye.
We'll be right along there, open five minutes later, seven o'clock. Continue public here for stormwater permit for twenty Man Hill, would I read that? You don't have a vote? No, we don't have a vote.
No, you know.
So, Mr. Schumacher, would you like to come up to the camera?
Yes, sure.
Would you like? Wash me up. You should sell.
Hi, this is Schumacher, this is my wife, Ashley Schumacher.
My dad.
Uh, we live at one forty-three Driftway.
Okay. So what's going on, and I think you want to build a new house.
Say that again?
So you want to build a new house on Man Hill Road?
Yeah, that's the plan, yep, we live across the street from Man Hill and, uh, yeah, it was like the, the little house on, uh, Man Hill Road.
So you know, our initial reaction was, um, you have, uh, due to the property, as you know, and we, the board felt very strongly that, um, um, it was not enough vegetation left on the site. So, um, I know that Mr. Joseph has had conversations with Mr. Schumacher about how you can renovate that. So Karen, would you like to?
Uh, so, um, yeah, because engineer is not here tonight, um, they are sick and so it's, they're not being able to get it. I can get a plan out if you want me to get a plan out to show it to everybody, but,
That has to be.
The board expressed concern at the earlier meetings that the site was totally muted. Engineering wise, it needs all the engineering criteria. The board, so I have put in a condition here that, um, you know, a landscape plan, uh, I'm just gonna find it. A, a mixture, a mixture of ergeries and deciduous materials to be provided to the town planner for approval prior to a building permit being obtained. Um, they, right now they're showing raspberries and blueberries and a vegetable garden and hydrangeas. And we didn't, I didn't think that the board felt that that was sufficient for a buffer year round. So, um, Mr. Schumacher has not, does no problem with trying to work on a landscape plan, um, because they want, they want privacy as well. Another board asked, Mr. Pritchard in particular, asked about trees to remain being shown. And no trees to remain were shown. Again, I've conditioned, um, I've conditioned that. I, I put trees to remain, if any show be shown on a revised plan to be submitted prior to recording the stormwater permit. Should be verified as the type of trees to remain to not impact swells. If you swell, redesign will be necessary. So, I, I, I was able to condition that if that's what the board wants. There is one place on the plan where the erosion control goes into the fifty-foot buffer. So prior to recording a new plan, uh, a new plan has to be submitted, taking the erosion control out of the fifty-foot buffer to the witness. Um, those are three things that I conditioned, which I thought were reasonable. But, I mean, the whole site is, is still disturbed. So it's up to the board.
So, Mr. Schumacher, I'm sure that you understand that, um, we always see a plan, you have, you have an idea in your head and we don't see that right here, that's the part. Um, so we have to kind of look into your heads to see what are missing, what vision in, in your yard and then we could tell you. Um, although neighbors don't have the right to tell you what to put on your property, everybody wants to be with neighbors. So I wonder what you need to use a light to get in the back of your house, it's pretty hot and it brought you a lot of air into that property. Um, I was out here today, it had a lot of water, it rained three inches today. Um, and I know that there was talk at one point of putting in some kind of like architectural, structural, a kind of a wall thing. To kind of do some kind of purification, demodication, naturalization, stone goes a long way toward that. Um, but not just like any kind of a, a fire wall, so I mean, you'd have to speak to a landscape or landscape architect to do that. And I know that you're open to suggestions from the town planner for herself as a landscape architect.
Right.
So, I guess, I need you to tell me, Mr. Schumacher, would you look out your kitchen window, what you expect to see? That's what I, that's what we'd like to know. So what, what do you imagine in your backyard? Besides children?
I think, yeah, besides children, exactly, but I, I, I think the first step is like, we're following the, the town's stormwater permitting guidelines, right? So that entire, that entails us to bring in a significant amount of fill. Do we wanna bring in that amount of fill? Absolutely not, we don't wanna bring in that amount of fill, right? Do we wanna put our house up higher? No, we don't, but those are the requirements that the town's making us do, right? So in order for us to put the house, in order for us to build a house there, we have to bring in the fill. You can't put in six feet, you know, six feet, three feet of fill around the trunk of a, of a tree and expect to keep it. That's, that's not gonna, that's not gonna happen, right? We currently lived across the house, across the street in this lot, right? We've lived there for, for five years. And, I mean, the plan that you're asking is for us to, um, is for us to, you know, basically beautify the entire lot, right? I don't want a plot with ju, with nothing on it, that's just all grass, right? I understand that some of the neighbors on Christopher Lane do have some, do have some hesitations on taking some trees down, right? In order for us to get the, um, in order for us to get the, uh, the, um, the, the pool as well as the, as well as the septic system in there. I mean, it's requiring us to bring in fill and that's the only thing is to put it just back in there because that's, you can see our lot is narrow until it opens up back in the, back in the, in the, into the house, right? So, um, I mean, at our current house, we had, we had numerous hydrangeas and raspberries and blueberries and all that stuff. We plan on putting all that and Karen gave us some great ideas, um, for, um, dis- deciduous plants, right? That would be great, you know, I mean, that would, that we're certainly willing to do. We're certainly willing to work with all the neighbors. I mean, I've gone to every single house that abuts our, that abuts this new property, talked to everybody except, except one person that I've been unable to get in and talk about, right? So, um, I mean, I think, I think some of them are actually here tonight and I think, I, you know, I'm, I'm willing to put a landscape plan along the, along the line of Christopher Lane and, you know, put in what's required to give everybody adequate, adequate, basically, uh, fencing along that whole line, so nobody's disturbed from, from any of the fence. I mean, so, some of the neighbors, you know, on Christopher Lane have, have, have cleared their, their property all the way back to the rock wall, right? So, um, I know, I would certainly want something along there anyway, right? If we're, if we're cutting these trees now. But the last thing I wanna do is go in there and clear cut, and clear cut the entire lot, right? But to, to start, it's like, you have to do that and then you can start with, and then you can start over with the plan. And that's our, that's our plan.
I tell you, Mr. Schumacher, I, I appreciate your, um, your honesty and, um, your transparency, that you understand that, um, it, it's difficult and I'm sure you understand, we lived someplace for a long time and all of a sudden we have a house there, I mean, Karen, we all, we all live with this. We, we all live with this, so we try to make this as painless and, um, as amicable as, as possible. So, um, I know that you're willing to work with Karen.
Or anybody, right? I mean, certainly, certainly Karen, but it, but the neighbors as well.
Yeah, so, does anyone have anything to add to this, Karen?
Um, I'll be here, I'll be curious to hear the public opinion if they're, um, I think my biggest concern is, I brought it up at the last meeting and to be honest, it's not fair for me to drag the Schumachers through, through the fire on this. My concern really has to do with the, the engineering, the site design engineering is coming, I, I have a bigger fish to fry.
Okay.
And, um, I understand everything the applicant has just said about this is kind of like what we have to do. Um, but, you know, that's what they have to do according to the way that they're, and they're professionals that design. I'm sure you don't, weren't the site engineers or something else. So, so,
I'd be rich if I was.
What?
But I, I think we need to start pushing more as a board to see more artful site design. I'm just, I'm getting to a point of being on this board now for five years that I'm gonna start saying no, do I, do I think it needs the low impact development design series? I'm gonna start saying no, because that's, it's, it's very loose and open to interpretation, but it's really, these sites are supposed to take advantage of national, natural geography, they're supposed to maintain a certain amount of tree can, like tree cover and canopy. Um, they're supposed to maintain vegetarians or natural state to the greatest extent possible. And time, time again, we see to the minimum extent possible. And I think that, you know, it doesn't, you know, in case of this, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's nothing to do with that. I think that, you know, this could be a discussion for later tonight, we're talking about zoning initiatives. But I think we need to start in this town now that development and open spaces really taken off. We need to seriously look at what teeth we have to have higher level site design, because it can be done. Trees can be preserved, grading can be done in a smarter way. Um, and it's not always about, oh, that's the easiest, least expensive option, because it's not, frankly.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, well, you have my support a hundred percent behind that, considering we have a huge project coming into us, that we know that this is gonna be a huge issue for us. Rebecca?
I don't think right now.
So when you say like, we're not mad at you? We're kind of running out of the engineer. Does anybody in the audience have anything that they'd like to say? Could you come forward and just identify yourself so we can hear you, and I'll hear you. Thank you.
Hi, Kristin Kieszewski and Todd Kieszewski, thirty Man Hill, so the property right next door. Um, we are, uh, we were here two years ago, you know? I'm concerned about the trees, um, concerned about a developer coming in, or about heat days. You know, the Schumachers are just amazing people, they have been fantastic neighbors. Uh, we've lived next door to them for five years, uh, we've talked about their plans, they love our yard, very much. And, uh, and design, um, and, uh, we are all confident that they're gonna keep situated in the neighborhood, um, at heart. I do have concerns with felling around trees, I'd rather have the trees be taken. Um, I mean, we consider everything that we've seen and what they've had to do to houses up. Um, you know, there, there is a certain amount of work that does need to be done. Uh, we have owned homes before next to properties where they raised and filled around trees and it was disastrous. Um, I'm a hundred percent confident that they're gonna put the money into the landscape, they need to keep our, keep our spirit of our street.
Thanks. Anyone else? I have a question, please.
Um, I'm Kurt Avalon, I don't think you guys have ever been speaking before, I'm at thirty-three Christopher Lane. And I'm against what the plans are right now. The original drawing had, you know, thirty feet undisturbed vegetation. Because this, uh, process in the power of continually raising properties is dangerous in my opinion. Especially to my house, which is next to the white lines and I look at the rain that you sent today, Patricia, and I go, you're getting twenty-seven thousand gallons, you know, coming off just this property, not all three. And it all comes down towards my house, which is the lower point in the property. So, you know, until there's either the vegetated buffer or something that is significant to stop the, uh, water. And my concern that's never been addressed is it's not just the water off these properties, it's that there are no storm drains on that portion of Man Hill, which is why it's always been wet. And why the water, so if the plans are not including the flow off the road, it's a big issue as well.
All right, thank you very much. Hi.
Cindy Snow, thirty-six, Man Hill, um, two doors down from the proposed property. Um, I agree in kind of what Kristen and Todd said and my husband David's on the line as well. We're completely supportive of the Schumachers' plans, we know they've got the, We're completely supportive of, uh, the Schumachers' plans, we know they've got the best of heart for their property, the neighborhood. Um, they'll do whatever it takes, they take care of their property, they wanna see it pretty. Um, we're looking forward to using the pool in the backyard at some point, um, kids or friends, all of that. I, you know, I think, um, look, you, you've approved the, the property that's being built, the two lots up from, from the Schumachers. Um, I think it adds to the neighborhood, I have confidence that we'll figure out the storm drain situation, I know that's in the plan. Um, and I am directly downstream from, from all of that, and I don't have any concerns that they'll do it the right way.
Thank you. Well, it says something that you literally, like literally move across the street, so you like where you live, which is nice.
We love where you live.
So, I mean, you, you like, you literally like, you just throw stuff off the window, catch it out the other side. Um, anybody, uh, online, if you're there, Rachel here, go let us know you're there.
No comments, I'm ready.
Okay, Ian, do you have a, like, oh, or, okay. You want this to end? Yes, please. Uh, this is a motion for approval, a draft, a draft. Karen? So we read this, what you want, just can I just have your, yes, Karen?
I understand. I'm going to talk to the stormwater permit, the site plan dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, with revisions through nine-six, twenty twenty-two, and stormwater management design calculations dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, with revisions through August eighth, twenty twenty-two, with the conditions known below. One, construction shall comply with the site plan dated June seventeen, twenty twenty-two, with revisions through nine-six, twenty twenty-two, and stormwater management design calculations dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, with revisions through August eighth, twenty twenty-two, by Paul Bappas, B.E., of Greater Consulting LLC, and the operation and maintenance plans for construction and post-construction for,
Just skip to three, twenty Man Hill Road?
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty Man Hill Road, latest revision August eighth, twenty twenty-two, except as they may be modified to conform, to the conditions below. And we are all owners of the property, or site contractors for grading, site work, and installation of utilities, foundations, and/or driveway shall be advised of this approval, and these conditions, according to the approval plan, approved plan, and conditions shall be kept on the site at all times during construction. Two, any plan change, changes, or any plan changes or changes from the proposed materials shall be submitted to the planning office to determine if the changes are insignificant or required by permit modification approved by the town planner. The stormwater management system, including dry wells and raft trenches, grading dwelling, and site amenities, locations, shall not be changed or expanded without the prior written approval of the issuing authority. Expansion includes additional pavement areas. Failure to obtain written approval is a violation of the town situated general bylaws and subject to fines. Three, copies of this approval and the approved stormwater permit plan and conditions shall be provided to subsequent owners who shall be advised of the need for periodic maintenance in the stormwater system and the need to retain the grading of the water supply. Prior to the transfer of the property, the owner shall provide to the subsequent owner and the planning office an inspection report certified by a professional engineer showing compliance with the operation and maintenance plan. The planning office must receive written notification at least one week prior to any change in the ownership of the property occurring during construction. Four, where this stormwater permit requires approval, permitting, or licensing from any local state or federal agency, such permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of this stormwater permit. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to commencement of construction. Five, the applicant shall consent to allow members and town officials from the planning board and other persons acting under the planning board's authorization to enter upon any lands and carry out such inspection as may be deemed necessary. The applicant shall cooperate with the planning board and town officials and assist them in their effort to verify whether the layout, design, and construction work for the stormwater permit are satisfactory and conform to town specifications and requirements of the board. Six, this stormwater permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds with proof furnished to the planning office prior to construction. Failure to record the stormwater permit is a violation of the permit and subject to fines included in the town situated general bylaws. Seven, the infiltration dry wells shall be installed to have the bottom elevation a minimum of two feet above seasonal high groundwater elevations. Stormwater during construction as well as after construction is not allowed to increase in rate or volume to adjacent properties, the street or off-site. Eight, no clearing beyond the limited work, limited clearing, erosion control line, as shown on the plan, is allowed. The limited clearance shall be staked in the field prior to construction, commencing and shall be maintained throughout the construction phase. Nine, construction work shall not begin prior to seven A.M. on weekdays and eight A.M. on Saturdays, and shall cease no later than seven P.M. or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal, state, and/or federal holidays. Construction work includes any operation of machinery and idling of vehicles. No truck idling on the site or adjacent streets is allowed. Ten, prior to the recording of the stormwater permit, a new site plan shall be provided moving the erosion control out of the fifty-foot above to the wetlands. Eleven, trees to remain along the stone walls have not been shown as requested. Trees to remain, if any, shall be shown on revised plan to sub, to be submitted prior to recording the stormwater permit. It shall be verified at the ti- at that time that trees to remain will not impact the swales, and if they do, swale redesign will be necessary. Twelve, an attempt has been made to make a buffer with proposed deciduous shrubs, however, offers no winter screening. A plan showing a mix of evergreen and deciduous materials shall be provided to the town planner for approval prior to the building permit being obtained. Thirteen, the temporary sediment control traps and swales must be installed during initial stages of construction prior to any foundation construction. All dry well areas must be fenced off during construction to prevent overcompensation of the soils and minimize construction traffic over dry wells. Fourteen, infiltration dry wells and swales must be retained and maintained as designed as they are components of the stormwater management system. Maintenance must be per early approved post-construction operation and maintenance plan. Fifteen, a stabilized construction entrance per the plan detail shall be installed prior to any work of a site and shall be maintained throughout construction. Sixteen, prior to any land disturbance, erosion control shall be installed and inspected by the town planner or approved agent. At this time, the site shall also be staked to show the house's situation improvements. All star piles shall be surrounded by an erosion-controlled area. Additional erosion controls such as silt fence, silt sock, and/or hay bales placed prior to precipitation event may be needed to prevent sediment from reaching the road or adjacent properties during construction. All erosion controls shall be installed per the plan and shall be maintained in good working condition throughout the construction. The applicant is responsible for maintaining and managing stormwater on-site throughout the construction period and during the transition to fully functional operations and maintenance. Construction approval in no way reveals the applicant from its obligation to ensure stormwater does not impact the abutting properties, and the applicant shall take all necessary steps to prevent some such occurrences. Seventeen, the town planner shall be notified when installation of the construction entrance and erosion control are complete. If any permit inspection is being requested, this notification shall occur forty-eight hours in advance, in advance of inspection. Eighteen, no on-street parking or loading or unloading of construction equipment or vehicles shall be permitted during construction unless a police detail is provided, if warranted, as determined by the police department. Noise mitigation and proper dust control shall be used. Nineteen, all disturbed areas associated with the stormwater permit shall be mowed and seeded with six inches of screen clean mown. Twenty, a reconstruction conference will be required on-site to verify the contractor is aware of the stormwater permit conditions and required inspections. Recording of the permit must occur to the reconstruction conference, prior to the reconstruction conference, with proof of recording furnished to the planning office. Twenty-one, construction inspections shall be as follows. A, all inspections through the town shall be performed by the town planner, our designated representative of the planning department, our planning board, and by the rec- record design engineer. All inspections shall be documented with written reports that describe compliance with approved plans and supporting application documents and construction specifications. Any variations shall be noted. B, the town planner and re- and record design engineering firm must be notified forty-eight hours prior to one installation of construction entrance and erosion control, and staking corners of the dwelling, limited work, driveway, and drainage improvements. Two, installation facilitation subs including directional swales. Three, bottom of the infiltration dry wells prior to vacuuming. Four, installation of infiltration chambers. Five, rough grading of site including swales, site, driveway, and driveway verified rated as sound, including slope and cross pitch of the driveway. Six, finished rating of infiltration dry wells, the elevations, is submitted to the town planner and designed with a design engineer for verification. Seven, inspection of the site amenities, including house, pool, and patio, driveway walk, and mowed and seeded areas. Eight, inspection of final completion of site work, including cleanup, to determine compliance with the conditions prior to issuing a certificate of completion, C O C. Work shall be subject to removal if necessary inspections are not requested. If the property is sold prior to completion of the work, the planning board receives credit to inform the buyer that the stormwater management system is incomplete. Spot rates shall be performed during rough grading and finished grading to ensure any swales will drain and no standing water will be present. Twenty-two, the applicant will provide a construction and plan completion guarantee at five thousand dollars prior to issuance of a building permit to guarantee that the town will be notified when site inspections are required. The as-built plan will be provided, will be provided, and construction will be completed in accordance with the plan. A certificate of completion must be issued prior to the return of the construction and plan completion guarantee. Twenty-three, the property owner shall be responsible for the program, maintenance and operation of the stormwater control system. A best management practices inspection schedule and maintenance checklist and plan is attached and shall serve as a guide for the proper maintenance of the system, which is required in perpetuity. Twenty-four, construction of the proposed stormwater management system, site utilities, site amenities, and grading shall be supervised by a registered engineer, professional engineer, who shall certify to the planning board that the site was constructed according to the approved plans. The certification shall be accompanied by an as-built plan, standby registered surveyor, and a registered professional engineer who designed the system and shall be submitted to the planning office within ten, ten days of completion of the work. This plan shall include the construction conditions of the stormwater management system, including top and bottom elevations, entrance, spot raises necessary, grading, house, site amenities, and dry wells. Prior to application for a certificate of occupancy, an interim as-built must be submitted to the planning office for verification that the stormwater management system and grading is following the design. The as, the final as-built plan must be submitted prior to obtaining a certificate of completion for the stormwater permit, and all work must be found in compliance with the approved permit. All grading and landscaping must be complete prior to the final as-built supplemental. Twenty-five, if the drainage system is not performing as designed and conditions of stormwater is absurd, going to abutting properties or the street, the stormwater authority can request necessary mitigation to remedy the situation. Twenty-six, underground irrigation systems are prohibited from connecting to the town's water distribution system or in any manner using municipal water. All irrigation systems installed must be supplied by on-site sources at the expense of the property owner. Violations of this policy shall result in a fine to the property owner with an equal fine levied on the installer of this system.
Whoa, yeah, discussion. I would like to draw your attention, Mr. Schuback, to the fine line in the areas. Those are very, very important. Please make sure that whoever's working on your property is cognizant of this document, and, and they really understand all the whole and stuff. Okay. Any other comments? We have to have a second thing. Okay.
Second. For the discussion. I.
On paper? Should I go, Stan?
Did we, did you go?
Oh.
Not yet.
Oh.
Wait, we're discussing.
Oh, on paper.
All right, bye.
We have to have a motion to close the topic.
Do it one.
Yeah?
You can do it one, it's a public hearing.
Yeah, I would have to close the public hearing. Thank you, Slade, anyone, so don't worry about it.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate you, good.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, we have. So, if I were to be right, what's that?
Amazing.
You're gonna have to get somebody to design, I mean, or you can, you can show some stuff on the plan, but, you know, I, I can't design it for you. I can, I can help you, but I can't, I cannot design this. Okay, yep, no problem, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, we have a discussion for the zoning for the annual spring town meeting, twenty twenty-three. Uh, oh, would you like to, Karen, on this, here, Karen, what would you like to add?
Uh, yeah, any suggestions?
Sure.
Uh, I know that we're a tight schedule and what have you, but we also have an endorsement, the common driveway.
Well.
You know, Mr. Diorfins here, and so we can get him in and get him out of here.
I didn't want you to say anything.
He's saying, please.
Right now, you're in, you go pull the phone.
I did not see you, Mr. Diorfins, sorry.
It's up to you, manager.
Absolutely. It's a conversation with someone here.
Okay.
Ball question?
I'm gonna stick around, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Oh, okay.
We didn't make a motion.
No, we didn't make a motion for this, um, and you wanna do the endorsement right now, or is?
We'll just do it.
I mean, so you basically, you wanna move to endorse the, uh, the bylaws for eight oh three, hospital is eight oh one, um, First Parish Road, Common Drive.
Move to endorse the common driveway plans at eight oh three, First Parish Road, AKA eight oh one, First Parish Road.
Second.
On paper?
Uh, all right.
Message is done, okay.
Thank you. Common Drive.
So, uh, Karen, would I have a little conversation about ladder building this? Ladder endorsing? Yeah. Well, because they, they rather have plenty more signatures around the plan, so I, I've probably been a little lax on some of the common driveways, and forget to put endorsements, so from now on, I'm more of an endorsement. Um, because we do, we retire it, probably, your special, your special permits and big stuff. And, you know, common driveways are not insignificant, so I will try to, I will try to remember.
Well, that would be on our list of critical, or anything that, something we worked every single time you were a project, right?
Right, something that we worked, so that's good. So, they, they feel better having it endorsed, so that's why, that's why it's all needed. Has not been recorded. It will be recorded, because recording is a condition prior to signing off building permits, pre-con, all that kinda lovely stuff.
Okay. All right, thank you, so what we need to do now, okay, move along.
All right, so we have three items of discussion. As you know, town meeting is, um, April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'm being told the final language has to be by January tenth, twenty twenty-three. That forces the planning board to have a public hearing in December, and a continued public hearing in December. And you usually do a zone workshop to introduce your ideas to the public, that would be in November.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's why we, that's why we're talking about it now. Um, you know, while we still haven't, we haven't heard from the attorney general yet on the spring town meeting, whereas we're supposed to hear by October thirteenth on that. And then the stuff that was approved on Monday night has already been submitted to the attorney general. So, I mean, we're doing our part.
So, I mean, we're doing our part to keep up here. So, we have three things that, so, I'm gonna take them out of order, let's start, let's start using. When Patty Wood and I were at the select board hearing, um, presenting our special town meeting articles, one select board member questioned on building height exceptions, um, wind turbines. I mean, right now, building height exceptions say height limits do not apply to outdoor amenities spaces such as roof deck, terrace garden, trellis and related structures conforming to section seven fifty-two. Height limits do not apply to mechanical and stairwell housing, roof-mounted cellular radio and internet transmission equipment, vents or exhaust, solar panels or small wind turbines, skylights, flagpoles and bell trays, chimneys, pool bowls, monuments, parapet spires, steeples and other non-habitable architectural features. They questioned if we should be taking out small wind turbines. And so, I'm bringing that before the board for you as the elected officials should make a decision on that.
So, I'm sorry, small wind turbine on top of a building?
Yeah, top of your house.
Or top of a building, yeah.
The reason is presumably because of some sort of public outcry or health effects of this problem.
Yes. Yeah, public outcry.
I'm, I'm gonna have to say no, I just.
Me too, I do, I would do the house to have picture of it on a difficult asset. I, I think that they, they, they complained or was supposed to use the picture of that.
I use the word terrifying, yeah, that's a red flag, so.
Yeah, and I think that, yeah, yeah, I, they're just. I guess it's my responsibility to bring it back to you, and so, if you guys are all saying no, then it's, I'm sorry.
Is it, but does anyone actually have those on their houses?
Well, I'm a frigging western, I think that's what you know. Don't people have, people have, yeah. That I don't, I mean, it's never come before the planning department, but it's probably usually the building department then, so.
Enough to do.
I haven't seen it as an issue before. And you're not giant, I mean, you're.
It can't be.
You're just a cock, I mean, you're, you're just.
You see them a lot on like sales, because they're using the charts and that.
Yeah. Right, yeah, yeah.
Right, so those I've seen, I just can't.
It's like that on a house, I guess.
Yeah. Maybe she usually, the two that I know are on faculty at Hofstra. Alright. Any more? So, we won't, we won't, we'll just not deal with that. No, we're indicating, no, no.
Are they allowed as a member, right?
Yeah. Yeah, building height exceptions. Um, the next, let's deal with parking next. Um, parking, it, it had come to my attention, off-site parking may be a may allow required parking to be permitted off-site for employees except for any required handicap parking and it gives you three conditions, you know, um, has to be within seven hundred feet walking distance, pedestrian access between the use of the off-site parking area must be paved sidewalk or walkways, and a lease has to be reported, a lease and reported covenant or a compatible legal instrument executed by the town constituent guarantee long-term use of the site. So, theoretically now, that means employees shouldn't park in cold parkway, because the town isn't gonna give a lease to somebody. Um, and then we have stacked and valet parking. Um, which is required by special, which is special permit. Valet or stock and stacked parking spaces do not require individual striding and they be permitted onsite or offsite where means of satisfying the applicable off-street requirements where, you know, they have to show you, um, proof of, proof valet will be operational, equivalent number of space assigned to replace, they have to have the right amount of parking, um, won't cause queuing and vehicular traveling and intended is provided. As it came up on a, a project, I am just asking, is the board gonna make any changes in any of this? Or are you happy with this work? Basically, valet is allowed off-site now, but off-site parking, did you want there was a question whether it's really just should be for employees or could off-site parking be used to come towards the parking for the, for the demand? I would live on that side of the argument. That off-site parking can become to, that's where I stand. I don't have any problem with valet parking, what a long city, I mean, it's, um.
And then, and then, and then valet would still be special permit.
Yes. Now, valet is my special permit, but off-site, generally off-site parking, valet is my special permit.
Right.
Regular off-site parking is not my special permit.
Right.
But you still have to meet the requirements in the zoning byline, you know, with the
Private.
Has to be, has to be within so many feet, it has to have the pedestrian access, you have to, you still have to produce some agreement that the board is gonna have to see.
Right, and cold parkway would be excluded, it would be private.
Well, it's cool, I don't hide, I, the town.
Well, I, I know, it is an enforcement issue, but I'm saying when they even apply for, when they bring a plan to us,
Right.
they need to give provisions for that, private, if they wanna use that as a form of way of.
I, right, if we, if we take, right, right.
Thing, so, and that, and that is, I, I agree with Patty, because I was thinking about this. Few times, I've been on the board, I've seen projects in the harbor, quite often, they're asking for a waiver from parking anyways. This would almost give them another opportunity to potentially meet their parking requirements without asking for a waiver, if, if I, if I understand correctly, so I, I think I, I would be in favor of that.
Right. Yeah.
Kind, kind of towards you.
I mean, it would have to be, I mean, the town is not, I don't see that the town would give a lease or recorded covenant or a legal instrument for cold parkway, so essentially, it has to be a private, private area. Yeah. Karen, the only question I have is, what is it, seven hundred feet or something, would I have, would we have to change the distance? Yeah. I don't see why you would have to change the distance. Okay, yes. Um, yeah. Nobody's, nobody's really presenting any options yet, I'm just saying, you know. So let me tell you a hypothetical, which may not even work, I mean, this just came out of nowhere. I own a business on Front Street and I, um, I, I make a deal with, I don't know, the constituents, um, Yocup, that I can use their pocket money, we pay them, so, that's okay, right? You run back and forth, back and forth, people run like hell, same with Shane. I mean, but that is, that is a potential, right, we may have the right to go and make an agreement with anybody they want. Right, but they can't impact the parking for that, whatever. Well, that's what I'm saying, sorry, some of it is, it's called spirogic. Got whatever necessary parking is, is required for whatever use, they have to meet, Yeah. Yeah. They have to meet that, so if somebody's going to have to have extra parking Yeah. that could be, and that would be part of the stuff that you ask for. Show us that this is quote truly extra parking. Yeah. So, like in the old, like in the old days, you say, I'm running down to the marina and nobody's using it all winter and can I use your parking number, and he says, yeah, make another couple of thousand dollars. Well, yeah, but, um, that marina is a seasonal use. Well, I'm about to say, but, but if you have that kind of a possible plan, that's, that's, we don't know a lot of those around, but Right, yes. Right. if you were creative enough, I'd give a vote for your opposition to valet parking.
Not at all.
Yeah. We love it.
Yeah, seriously.
Yeah.
The other thing is, back when, um, TK O'Malley's opened and it was the big debacle with the war.
Yeah.
And they made their pri- their parking lot private with the gate and the whole nine yards. TK's wanted to, um, lease, yeah, I think it was Vinnie Oil's, you know, parking lot, which was empty across the street for serious money, you know, and go into it now.
Yeah.
So, and that's the way it is. Um, my feeling is, and I guess coming as a business owner, I can't be concerned about parking. If people want what I have, they'll get there. And why would you open a business somewhere that needs X amount of parking? If you can't get the parking, then why are you there?
Well, no, I, I, I get, so actually, yesterday's goal here was an interesting article about, maybe, uh, may take away the parking requirements. Well, because they don't, they, they feel like they sacrificed too much property to parking. That it's precious land, it's an interesting article to read. Rebecca, I don't feel about valet parking.
Common kind of parking.
Oh, it's more the other part that I'm concerned about. And do you wanna change the wording? The planning board may allow required parking to run off-site and just cross out employees. Yes, yeah, I, I would. So that anybody can have their required parking off-site, but it's a pretty high standard that they have to meet.
I, I, I think that's fair, because like I said, it's, I'd rather do that than waivers and then, and then say, just park cold park, whatever does, and then here all the public come out of that game, which is obviously, there's not enough parking in cold parks.
Yes, the tobbies are naturally on your own, sorry.
Well, there are people in town who feel that if they cannot park at a C V S.
They don't wanna go.
There's, there's not adequate parking, because nobody wants to walk, which is really unfortunate, um.
Have you ever seen the movie Wally?
No.
No.
We'll watch that later, no, not watching.
Well, we don't have, we don't have children, you know.
And I still, and I have to say, I, and I know it was the selectman, the selectman that did it, four parking spaces have been taken up by the gala.
Yeah.
And everybody else is using sidewalks but them.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't quite understand that concept.
Well, that's not dwell on that, I think, you, you guys seem to say you want to proceed with taking out four employees
That's no. Nope.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Because technically, valet parking is allowed, so that's the way. Mm-hmm. I mean, I'll just, I, we'll start putting in placeholders and starting coming up with, you know, the official language and stuff, you know, all that kinda duh-claw that we have to do. Alright, then the last one is common driveways. We decided at the last, um, for the special, excuse me, for the special town meeting, we were quite ready. And so, I've been bending the language around and, um, this is where I think we are, um, and I just, we, we have to discuss it. I mean, if you think we're ready to go forward, um, we, we should go forward. Or if you don't wanna do it anymore, um, whatever.
Well, I think the developers have finally realized that we mean business as far as common driveways are concerned. That.
Well, I think we each have something, right, it's not gonna be here forever, neither a week.
Yes. No, no, no.
I, I think we work on this pretty diligently, it's, you know, over the past few months, and I think it's, we're already in a very strong draft at this point, a lot of people have had input, um, and we, we work and put this on the top, fault, I mean, so I don't see the point in not moving forward, it's kind of a waste of time.
Alright, so then, let me pick, let me show you, let's discuss a couple things so that I know that we're on the same wavelength. You know, we, um, we put the common driveway starts at the street and comes to the driveway up to it, including the turnaround.
Karen, where are you just?
On this, on the, on the, like, the third, the second paragraph. Okay. Okay. The common driveway area is the entire access area for the purpose of benefiting adjoining properties. We wanted a definition of a common driveway, because you wanted basically to say the common driveway is the whole part of the common land. So, that, that was put in there. You also wanted, I mean, we, I put in a provision clause again, um, prior to November thirtieth.
This one.
So, so any common driveway that you didn't wanna try or buy, buy new stuff had to be by November thirtieth. The rest of the stuff is pretty standard, what we talked about before, um, you know, we talked about the entire residential lot to be served by the common driveway, shall be shown on the common driveway plan. Um, the lot shown, show, the lots shown shall show existing and proposed structures and grades with a certification by the design engineer that all structures and buildings conform to applicable zoning requirements. A separate stormwater permit is required, it shall be seen simultaneously with the common driveway application. You guys wanted that.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, and you wanted, no plan for a common driveway shall be approved unless engineered damage calculations are provided to the planning board until, and until the board is satisfied that the plan based upon per review provides sufficient drainage control measures that will result in no increase in runoff onto property other than one of the lots to be served by the common driveway. Um, those were the major things that I got out of the, in addition to the other changes that you, you guys all said you wanted. And so, those I have incorporated um, in the blue, um. And, and then the other, the other one, that, um, all common driveways shall require a special permit from the planning board except that common driveway is less than five hundred feet in length serving two lots with adjoining legal frontage so not require special permit, will, uh, be subject to provisions of seven seventy site plan review. Um, so that, that we put back in. Yes. Yeah, because that's what everyone seemed to say they want. The one we were talking about. So then, I will come up, uh, for the next round of discussion, I will put this all in one, I will put all those red changes, um, so, so the general public can see what's a red change, um, for what's, what's coming. We'll cut down the pipe. So, right now, I believe we're projecting the, um, workshop for November fifteenth. Or some, somewhere seventeenth, somewhere, somewhere around that time, because we decided we weren't gonna meet the week of Thanksgiving, but we were gonna meet the week, so we'll have two back-to-back meetings, November, right, November tenth and November seventeenth. And the public hearings would be December eighth and continued public hearing December fifteenth.
Okay.
Now, we are gonna have a whole bunch of special permits, as you saw earlier tonight, so, we're gonna have to, um, I think we continue one to November tenth and one to December fifteenth, so. Okay. Okay. So hopefully, people will be able to make all these things, because I believe, I don't know what, you, you uh, for here, you can only miss one meeting. Yeah. So, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna become important to, to the special permits. And can I say this, that we, we hold a truly hybrid meeting. That if you cannot be here physically and you can be here electronically, it's supremely important to us. We're making huge decisions and we all we're elected officials and this is what we signed up to do, so we need to do our very best to, to be here. Like I said, either in that little TV screen or are here, I really like this idea of, Rebecca, you join us when you were, I don't know, when we're here, and it's perfect, and we're done fine. Mind you, this hybrid stuff only goes to, I believe, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
We continue to be on that.
No, it always continue to March. To March, March twenty twenty-three, so, they'll be making more things. I, I don't know if they're gonna be allowing it after that. I think they were attempting to potentially make changes to the old immediate law. But I don't know how that easy that's gonna be. They need to get people back to work, if people want to get back, yes. Yeah. Yes, Mr. Dielkens?
Just wanna try and back you up for a second to the, um, wind energy conversion systems.
Yes.
To let you know that, um, I just looked at the use chart, it's not listed in the use chart in any district. They're only listed under section seven forty, which is wind energy conversion systems. And the planning board is hereby established as the special permit granting authority. So, you can't do them as a matter of right, the way I'm reading it, and as far as the heights concerned, you can control that with every special permit that you rent.
Do we know?
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want, so I still want my business, new business, you wanna do in the minutes, is that, or is not?
Um, I move to approve the meeting minutes for September eighth, twenty twenty-two.
September.
On paper?
I, I. Somebody else need to sign this because I wasn't here? It doesn't matter. Um.
I think you don't vote on.
No, but I think you can sign, I think. And counter.
I'm also approving the registration of one thousand two hundred ninety dollars to Horsey Witten Group for peer review services for one fifteen and one eleven L Street, AKA one oh nine L Street, block one and two. For one thousand twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents to Vines and Associates for traffic peer review services for seven New York Drive. And two thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars, eighty cents to Horsey Witten for peer review services for Seaside and St. Louis.
Certainly.
So in favor.
All right. Karen, do you have a recap of tell me or is it just it is what it was?
It is what it was.
And it's done.
It's done and um you know, it's they approved the site for their water treatment plant. And they approved the uh the baseball field. So we will be getting in a stormwater permit for the baseball field that they promised us pretty much right away.
I agree with that. I don't think they know what they go with.
Oh, that was that was hardly a procedure. I mean, yeah, I don't I don't like that.
So, you know.
I'm not a moderator.
Well, well, we'll be getting, you know, we'll be getting permits in. I mean, they they're a water treatment plant is supposed to um I don't know, you know, their timeline said April twenty twenty-three, and I mean, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
To file for the with the planning board or the?
Yeah.
Like ground, oh.
I mean, they wanna do they want their signs that their slides and they wanna do PIPA, you know, um to do some of your state permitting first um prior to coming to the local law.
So. As the planning board, this is not going to desire to realize, so um I think it is to the town's greatest. They should work as hard as they can to make this as attractive as it possibly can be with as few trees cut down as possible. They have to stage a protest, an all-time protest of the H A S laws to trees. Um, my parents would be so proud. I'm just um but I I I think that um since there was opposition, don't forget Tommy, this long time body, the people do not want it there. Uh I I force it for a license to someplace else, but I voted for it cuz we need a water treatment plant. It's as simple as that. Um, but I think it would be hope the town to kind of listen to people for once, so let's not have another repeat of police station, which is supposed to be broken. Now it's out of a hot award or whatever it is and we can't say anything, so um. And I think the baseball field, uh I could tell you that um we heard three different numbers within five years. Um, I mean, I wanna say this, it'll probably be arrogant, so those people just obviously overwhelm speaking. And based on that vote, I came to what Tommy had wrote on fields, they go by law. That's my takeaway from that.
I think it made that procedural defense point that normally with whether a CPC or capital plan is um the moderator will, whoever is presenting, you can listen, you can hold.
Yeah, which we didn't get to.
Which we did not get to, yeah. And that made made a bit of a difference, but I'm not sure. So.
Well, I do have some good news for everybody here. Um, the last time we went together, we would discuss a way we would put it on a flexible open space development. The four-year charity has been sold.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's been sold to the people, to the co-ke church who wants a crisis. And they're gonna maintain it as a retreat house. So and that that and that came to me by the most furious route you can imagine cuz I don't put a charge. So there's somebody said, oh, you know, it was sold. I said, I hadn't heard that. I filed a warrant that they sent to me. Um I don't know when they're gonna take possession. I'll never be decided for it, Karen. I will go on to do that.
It's it's um a very quality, isn't it?
Yes.
No, it's uh.
So like I said, so it's um so that's that's good news for us, that we don't have to worry about uh a subdivision, right, the else going to get up there. And then the other one that I really thought interested is that Anton Bluey is making a like a giant restaurant type thing in Derby Street. They're expanding like no one right with Tom, which is to be the right inside.
And then I've also heard that um Chick Vega sold is um
Or storage facility, yeah.
Yes, sold.
We've had calls on that for months.
I know, but it's sold because friend of mine received it. I noticed that. I don't have anything for.
Have we re- liaisoning?
Of the planning development.
Well, as usual, I was out at Tope Brothers in the rain today.
Oh, I guess.
As usual, there was silky water going outside. So they're 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 fine. They'll be fine. So.
Which portion of the site is this act or?
By Er- Irvine.
Almost agree with.
Irvine Street and the back part, so it's going down. It it's going down Irvine Street and it's going out towards the back, towards um to Long Jekyll.
Oh, it's going that way now.
Yeah.
It's going both ways.
Yeah.
Hmm. Yeah, it could cut it to this way.
Yeah.
The problem is is they've got a hatch basin that's not functioning during at the site. Um, it's way too high. It's not set flush with the binder. And I've told them this for months and they just don't.
They don't pay attention.
They don't pay attention. Um, and so, you know, it's
Frustrating.
Frustrating.
It it's frustrating. I'm told that they are going to be done with the buildings by the end of the year.
Oh, wow.
That just not being that the site will be done.
No, no, no.
So site's got a long way to go.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, um. I just wanted to make one note about stormwater permits that, you know, is in the stormwater. We've been I've been getting this for a while. Um, and I'm keeping, I'm putting in that the stormwater, putting design engineer must do inspections too. That's to keep the engineer who's gonna stamp this, is gonna get this ass built in the end. You know, he's got, he's he's got skin in the game.
Okay.
And so that's something, and I have been getting reports.
Excellent.
I mean, you know, depends on what project it is, but you know, um, I know that the en- I know the engineers are going out. Um, and the ENF has filed for the new seawall and armor revetment from twenty-two Oceanside to one fifty-one Turner. I don't really see that it's, I don't really think, I don't see any comments the planning board needs to make. I mean, Conservation Commission will handle it. It needs a chapter ninety-one. And um I just don't see that the planning board needs to have anything really to say.
It seems to be like we spent all our money on seawalls at Oceanside. I it seems like we were the same place all the time.
It makes me think that wasn't, didn't have, so like instead of a master plan, did you have a pay-per-view?
Yeah. We got one.
Oh, you didn't?
We got one.
Sorry, I don't have time.
Well, I'm not blaming you.
I it's 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 a it's a lot of work and we just haven't had time yet.
Yeah, no, that's that's something that I can't find right here about big seawall rebuilds and all that. It's disgusting.
Well, the one the the one from um Man Hill to Seaside, that hasn't moved at all as solid as can be.
So solid as can be.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, maybe should we consider putting lots of concrete with that, really?
That's enough to help. Um, the wall of, go ahead. Sorry, Steve, you were trying to say something.
Right, just on the condition on the the special permits, it should say that the design engineer and firm, rather than a particular engineer and that's something that actually went through this with Karen with uh Craig Tansyweev and the engineering company.
Oh, yeah.
So and then they move around in time, and it should be, I think it should be the company that designs it should be wrong.
It's six one half dozen, not a, it means the same thing. It means the same thing.
We know it.
I will I will try and do that from now on. Um. Perez Estates, the sidewalks are going in.
Oh.
Um, our engineer has um been out there a couple times for the um looking at the gravel. Drainage system is going in at um Six McDonald Terrace. Um, back to Perez Estates. We have two patios that were put in that exceeded the um permeable permeable lot, impervious lots. I really haven't gotten a great direction from the board how we want to handle these. Um, one of them is clearly impervious.
Mm-hmm.
And so how much, how much do you want them to be coming into the board? Do you want a full stormwater permit? How how do you how do you want this handled?
Well, let me ask you this, and you can tell me if if something doesn't end in the matter stuff.
The these were put in, we happened to notice them when we were doing a site visit, and we said wrote them letters that said we've exceeded your impervious allowance cuz we know they did. And so now they have to remedy the situation. And so one of them wanted to replace their driveway with permeable driveway, and we said no. Um, so, you know, we basically, they're they're gonna hire an engineer, but do you want basically a full blown stormwater permit?
Well, I I'm gonna tell you that um I don't think it's gonna do us any good to call the homeowners here because they're not gonna know what we're talking about. We already know that from talking to children. They don't really know what we're talking about. So if they're and you're all gonna have to hire an engineer because they're all gonna go over the impervious and impervious, we already know that, so.
But do they know what it is?
Well, the homeowners don't. We hopefully the en- the engineers do. We can only hope that. Um, I would request that they all come in to see us, that might give them a little possible thought. What do you think? Don't that too much?
Well, but we we didn't.
Everybody who wants to put in.
Oh, if anyone that wants to put in my purpose.
I mean, the panel that we saw is huge. It's 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 a part, it's it.
I mean, the way I kind of feel, I think I brought this up with the Fogonies at Coldbrook.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I feel like that kind of set, for me, that set the standard for this subdivision of how we need to approach.
So that was a stop, that was a stormwater permit with drainage calculations.
I I almost feel like that has to be the global standard that we're doing.
Alright, and that's what, that's what I'll tell them.
Uh, that's what I was asking, yeah.
That that's what I'll tell them, that I mean, you know, I would tell to people that we're expecting I'm expecting more than just a landscaper to figure out this, right? Um, a landscaper just to figure out, you know, the drywall has, you know, a drywall has so much capacity, so therefore the roof or or something. I would tell them it's a full stormwater permit.
Yeah, those ones are tricky cuz they're retroactive, you know, they did it.
Yeah. And that's the problem, so that's.
That's that's why I asked different board. That's why I asked different board.
Those are different.
That's why, so before this spring is like the other twelve people who do it this, and then there's nothing out there with concrete, you know, whatever.
The people wanna work with, they they wanna work with us. They they say they did it, though.
Yeah.
They wanna work with us to resolve the situation, um et cetera. So they are trying to work with us, which I think is a really good thing. And, you know, if if it's just drywells or some simple engineering solution that you're willing to accept for the ones that are already done, then that's what that's what I need to know.
I mean, yeah, I I I would be, like, I would be open, as long as there's some level of thoughtfulness that's put into it.
Okay. Okay.
But I think for for future ones, we have to look, look, everybody's the same stance.
Absolutely. Okay. Alright, so I just wanted to try to because they're waiting for my answers. And I just, you know, I'm we're I'm trying, we're trying to help them, et cetera.
Sure, sure.
Cuz we know the response was is that they were truly, truly misled.
That goes without saying.
With them, so and like I said, the the person that Karen and I spoke to you know, it's kind of like it's my house, but we know it's your house, and unfortunately you got the ginormous patio in back of you. And then wants to do this additional stuff, which is like over and above what's gonna be allowed. And he doesn't know, so that's interesting. So bringing in a homeowner does not help.
Yeah.
So you need to have some, I I I would, we we need to set the schedule.
I I think we we do, like, we didn't know it would come to the head like this, but I think we knew when
But we.
Or Mary Delicia Harris were representing them, that this was pushing it to the limit.
They're gonna tell me.
They met the bylaw, and now we have the problems we're worried about.
So I do think I agree with that, that the foregoes will be to go upstairs, and we are gonna they wanna commit.
Did you find out where the drainage or whatever was going in one of those houses? Was it going into the?
Yes, we did find that.
Yeah.
And where's it going?
They pumped it into the basin. We told them they can't do that. I told them they can. So they wanna put it into a drywall.
What?
Which I.
But he came, what, I told him that too.
Oh, yeah, he told us that. He was heard. They tried to work with us. They are they're being good. They are being
He was heard. Yeah. Yeah.
conscientious homeowners.
And reasonable.
And 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 reasonable to a point, yes.
Who are we saying, Dwight? Yeah, just like he walked us right over to where the bike came off. It's a it's a central part.
And have they resolved the alarm on the septic system?
I don't know.
They can't do that. But do you know, yeah, cuz someone put in your drywall. Actually, we told him. He was like, well, I I literally think, well, that looks like a giant heart. I'll just put what what is there? I think that's like if you don't see it, something like this is, why would you think that that's wrong?
How would you?
How would you know?
How would you know?
Yeah. So yes, we would like engineers to take up it.
Alright, so you want um on anything new, but the two existing ones, they don't need an engineer? I I think that I don't know how you're gonna buy it.
That's tricky.
That's tricky.
It's tricky.
Um, I mean, I don't think it would hurt to get an engineer to go and look at them. Um the person uh who's doing the ass builds, I do not want them to do that, right? We don't want that.
We can't necessarily say that if
Okay, that's what I think.
If it's, if they don't think it's a conflict of interest, then
Hard to say.
Hard to say.
Okay. It's hard when subdivisions are built by all different people. Yeah, it's hard to keep track of who who does what. Um, it would be my suggestion as a layperson, that they all hire an engineer. That I know it's gonna cost them a lot of money, but in the long run, it's gonna save them money and aggravation. That's my, anybody can try it and agree with us.
I would I would I would go farther and accept a pro- any professional that's capable of understanding the issues at hand. To me, to me, it doesn't have to be, it could be a landscape, a landscape architect too. But some like somebody that is a professional in this domain that fully can understand what's going on.
So if and with that being said, not all landscapers are capable of doing that.
Certainly not.
Okay, so that's.
Definitely not.
Also too, you want um
If these people are in violation of the bylaw, the stormwater bylaw, they have to meet the stormwater bylaw.
Yeah, right.
And the stormwater bylaw tells you who has to design the systems. That's all you have to go by. Otherwise, if you're let somebody else design, you should do that for everybody.
Yeah.
So they should just meet the stormwater bylaw.
Do they all have their homes association?
We told them.
And what about their, and didn't you tell me, Karen, that the owners, whatever wasn't filed?
They're working on it. That that the O and N was never filed. They're working on it.
Um, and they are working on getting um a a homeowner on the HOA. Um, they're only a couple years behind on that, but they are working on that. So I think once they have a little more ownership, um but they are in violation of the, through law法to their own, but again, if you can say, how would you know? How would you know, so? So Karen's still waiting for answer?
No, I I I think I have the answer.
Okay.
I mean, I I think I have the answer.
Okay.
And so I I'm going to that, you know.
But you have any more good news than your good news?
I have nothing else, you know, it's, you know, same old, same old stuff, different day.
I'll make a motion.
Go on, you turn. It's the other question. All in favor?
Alright.